Hey, hey, we're live, guys.
No.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, uh, meeting of the Perry Municipal Authority, uh, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one at six fifteen. Roll call, please.
Cold Iron.
Here.
Bond.
Here.
Dillbeck. Ahern.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
White.
Here.
Moral.
Here.
Wines.
Here.
Strelor.
Here. Thank you. I do declare a quorum. Uh, uh, invocation tonight will be by Brian Ahern. Brian?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Let's all pray. Father, we are thankful for this day you have given us for its blessings, for the opportunities, and even the unique challenges all of us face. We pray for strength and guidance and wisdom tonight as we continue to do the work of our community. May we be challenged to give our best always, tonight and every day, and may we be assured of your presence in each and every moment of each of every day. We pray this in your precious name. Amen.
Thank you. Uh, before we get started, somebody has a radio or a TV on. Oh, Mr. Meacham, looky there. Was it you? All right, uh.
Not me, but I just spilled a cup of water on my desk, so now I gotta clean it up.
Oh, I seen you rea- I seen you reaching right quick. I thought you were guilty.
No, I was reaching for my phone, so it didn't get covered in water. Sorry.
Oh, okay. Item number one is the consent agenda. Uh, there's just one item on there that minutes from the last meeting.
Motion to approve this brand.
Second wines.
Uh, roll call, please.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Strelor.
Yes, thank you. Item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to the items on the PMA this evening. Hearing none. Uh, item five, proclamations, accommodations, reports, and inquiries by the governing body. Pardon me. Hearing none of those either. We will move to item six. Consider approval of amendment to chapter one, section twelve of the Personnel Manual of the City of Perry, Perry Municipal Authority, by the addition of new subsection B concerning full-time employees with temporary reduction and relettering the section. Okay, uh, Dixie, would you talk about this? You and I had a discussion, and I don't want to mess it up.
Sure, I'll be glad to. Um, currently in the Personnel Manual, we've got, uh, full-time employees, part-time, seasonal, and there's been a need at various times to offer people somewhat of a reduction in hours, either because of their own health problems, health problems within their family, or something of that nature. And we try to, try to accommodate people, but, uh, in looking at it, it just kind of came to my attention that these people are still drawing the same amount of vacation pay, same amount of sick leave when they're not working the full forty hours. And I just felt that it was in our best interest as a city to rectify that and not, uh, continue to, to make something, some provision where we could allow people, uh, and this would have to be looked at by the department head, approved by the city manager, uh, and it would only be for six months at a time or less because it, it's not anything we want full-time, and it's only if there's a serious circumstance within their family. But it's just an, an effort to be a good employer and, uh, try to help people in their time of need, but at the same time be fair to the city.
So, so Dixie, just, uh, uh, I hope I'm not breaking an HR rule, but I'm gonna use a example real quick. Uh, probably something that we don't have much more, but like if somebody gets dog bit out checking meters, that would be an example, and that's something we've done in the past. Is that correct? But we're, we're kind of, we're kind of making it in, you know.
That would not be an example because that would be a work comp. So that would not be an example. This would be more like somebody's family member has cancer or some, or they themselves do, or, uh, heart issues, you know, some really devastating diagnosis or some problem that requires them to have lots of a doctor's appointments and lots of time away from the job.
That answer your question, Derek?
I think so. I mean, it's something that we're currently doing, but we're just formalizing the, the wording, basically, right?
We, we are doing it somewhat. We have, we've been real careful and not, and just done it, allowed it a little bit as was necessary. Uh, but now I've actually had a request for somebody that, that really needs it, and I understand their need. But, uh, at the same time, like I said, I, I don't really feel that it's fair to all the other employees. I don't feel like it's fair to the city without us making some sort of, of ruling on that. And so I'm just, um, proposing, I just brought this to Bryce and said, I think we need something like this. I had, uh, Larry and Russ also read it over and gave their stamp of approval, just trying to make something that, that works for everybody.
So you're just trying to match their benefits to actual hours that they're, that they're working, or?
That is correct.
Any, any further questions for Dixie? Or Russ or Bryce? Or if not, we'll entertain a, uh, motion, please.
I'll make that motion that we pass it.
Second.
Moral.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Strelor.
Yes, thank you, authority members. Uh, motion on the adjournment, item seven.
Motion to adjourn.
Moral.
Second.
White.
Roll call, please.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Strelor.
Yes, thank you. Ready, Dixie?
Ready.
All right, uh, I would like to call to order the special meeting of the City Council of City Perry, March fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty-one at six twenty-two. Roll call, please.
Cold Iron.
Here.
Bond.
Here.
Dillbeck. Ahern.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
White.
Here.
Moral.
Here.
Wines.
Here.
Strelor.
Here. Uh, I do declare a quorum. Uh, we'll take action on, uh, item number one, the consent agenda. There's several items there for you to, uh, look over.
Moral, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Ahern, second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Strelor.
Yes. Item four, comments than those assembled pertaining to the items on the city agenda. Hearing none. Uh, we'll move to item five, proclamations, accommodations, reports, and inquiries by the governing body. Uh, does someone want to comment, Larry, about the twenty twenty-one World Autism Awareness Day?
We had, uh, received a, a, um, email from the Oklahoma Director of this, uh, Awareness Day for Autism, uh, simply asking us to, uh, pass this as a council and put it on the agenda. We, we do know that we have a few folks that, uh, suffer from autism. They're, it's in their family, uh, in Perry, and we thought this would be a good gesture to let them know that, uh, we do support, uh, research, and, um, we understand, uh, how difficult this can be sometimes.
And that will be, uh, the month of April. Uh, the whole month of April will be world aut- is, is world autism, and April second is the World Autism Awareness Day in the City of Perry. So that, those will be the dates. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Okay, item, uh, we'll move on. Item six, city manager's report, monthly update.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this week, uh, we'll begin, the Water Department will begin repairs on, on a very annoying water leak at, uh, seventeenth and South Boundary. Uh, it's probably gonna take all week for them to do that. Uh, they're gonna try to do it at night, starting at, uh, midnight, and work through the night, just to make certain that, um, the, uh, any issues that they may have are at that time of night. Uh, hopefully that, uh, folks won't see much difference in their water pressure. You may see some across the city. So I just wanted to say that, but, uh, we're excited that they, they were able to, uh, schedule this repair for this week at spring break. Uh, a lot of folks out of town, uh, and certainly school's not in. So that relieves, uh, a lot of, uh, issues right there, too. So this has been a, an annoying leak for a good long time, as, uh, Curtis can, can attest to. Uh, also, I wanted to remind the, the council and the community that, that, um, we'll be having a ribbon cutting Wednesday, March twenty-fourth at, uh, ten o'clock, uh, for the, uh, Tandeko Walking Trail. We're excited about this. It's been used for a, a number of months. Actually, it was been used while, while construction was going on, but, um, it's done now. It's completed. Uh, we've done everything we needed to do. Turos and folks will be here. Our engineer will be here. Uh, uh, and some of the other folks that helped us, uh, start this project many years back. So we welcome everyone to come, um, and enjoy, uh, ribbon cutting, March, uh, uh, March twenty-fourth. That's Wednesday at ten AM. Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions, uh, for Larry, the city manager? Uh, Larry, I do have one. Uh, maybe we need to make an announcement or an awareness. Uh, are we done picking up all the limbs from the, the storm damage, uh, from the citizens? Cause I still see people put, dragging stuff to the curb, and there has to be some point we just, it's gotta be cut off.
We would like to spend one more week. Uh, it won't be this week. It'll, uh, it'll be next week with, uh, one more attempt to go around and, and get all the alleys and any, any leftover piles. There's still some leftover piles. Um, and then probably April one, we'll stop that. And we've also, uh, be sending code around to, to witness those, those, uh, residents that, uh, have made no attempt at all to clean up. And then we'll, uh, start reaching out to them and ask for their cooperation. So April first will be the last time that, that we as a city pick up. So if you've got anything, we're picking up limbs. We're not picking up trees. We're picking up limbs. Um, so, um, that'll be the last effort for that. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Derek.
Yeah, a question. Uh, there is a provision, though, that as long as they're bundled correct and, and they notify the city, then the, they, the city will still fix stuff up, correct?
That is through, uh, Davis sanitation. We're just talking about our part that streets will be doing.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear as well, as long as they.
Any further questions? All right, we will move on to item seven.
Larry? Sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jamie.
So Larry, they'll just drive through, like, all of Perry one last time between now and April? Uh. You know? We, we're, yes. We'll, we'll be doing the alleys and also any, any limbs that are out by the street, just like we've been doing for a good while. I was just, I just want to make sure if anybody asks us that there's not a designated day or time or something for them that they would just, they have from now until April, we'll set it out on the curb. Right. It, it's a concerted effort between, uh, I drive around, uh, streets drive around and, and pick up. We see little spots here and there, and with the wind, uh, I know that there's still limbs falling down. My tree, uh, some of my trees are still falling down, so it's, um, it's, it'll be the last time we do that. Okay, thanks. Thank you.
All right, uh, I appreciate that. Number seven, chief financial officer's report. Do we have one of those available tonight?
You might. You, you want me to talk or you want me to make this quick?
Hey, it's your floor, man. I give it to you.
Oh, good. Well, good, cause I have about an hour's worth of discussion that I need to go through.
I vote for quick.
Jamie's at a party.
Somebody's probably skiing or something one time. It's all quicker than, sooner rather than later, but whatever.
Jamie, I'll second.
All right, let, let me tell you about a couple of little things that happened this month that, um, really had us i- in a quandary and, and a little bit perplexed, you know? Overall, um, you guys know that we, we buy our wholesale electric from OMPA. And, you know, the OMPA, um, had a spike in their cost of production for electricity, driven by the fuel rate going up. Um, whenever, whenever that spiked during, during the month, particularly during that major cold snap, you heard it on the news and you heard everything else. Um, the thing that I need to tell you today is because of Dixie's great work on the board and the board down there doing their part, um, we should not see an increase, uh, uh, for sure, drastic increase in our electric costs, um, to our citizens. Um, there's a whole lot of story that goes along behind it. I'll be happy to share a lot of that with you if you have more questions. But that's probably the single largest, um, angst that I have had related to finances in municipalities in the state of Oklahoma, maybe ever, you know? Um, tornadoes come through and demolish half of our, half of the community one time. Yes, it was a major financial hit, but what we were talking about dealing with here was something that was going to be significantly, um, large, um, and, and something that we wouldn't be able to necessarily handle. Um, the wholesale cost of electric for a two-day period potentially was going to cost as much as what we pay for three hundred and sixty-five days of electricity. Um, that's the size and the magnitude of what we were dealing with. But like I said, it, it's been taken care of and, and life is good. So let me jump on to a handful of other good news pieces, um, that we want to pass on. Um, sales tax, year-to-date, we're up almost nine percent, um, for sales and use taxes combined number. Uh, that, that is, that's a great news for us. Um, you know, we had budgeted to be down, um, in an overall number. So being up is, is good news for us. Um, we will have budget amendments, um, next month, and you guys will see those numbers roll through probably about a hundred and fifty-plus thousand dollars, um, in extra sales tax collections, um, that we'll be projecting over that period. Uh, mind you, a lot of that sales tax is committed funds, so not all of it goes to the bottom line. We have to pay our debt service numbers. We have to pay hospital there money, but, but there is going to be an increase, um, in, in that number year-to-date. One of the downsides that you'll see in the financials this month, um, hotel motel tax collections at an all-time low. Um, you know, the month of, of January, um, sales tax collected and remitted was down to eighty-five hundred dollars. Um, that, that was, that is the, the all-time low, um, since I have been here almost a decade now. And probably one of the bigger concerns that we have, because we have dollars committed out of those hotel motel funds, um, you know, going to debt service, we also have those committed going to, to our, to our chamber and, and to Main Street and supporting those other activities. So, um, that is something that, that we're gonna have to keep an extra eye on. You know, um, we are following up. There were a couple of non-remits, um, from, from the month of January. Uh, with the economy and with everything happening in, in hospitality, um, the hospitality industry in general, you know, we're, we are a little bit concerned seeing those numbers fall off. So that is something that, that we'll be watching and taking care of. Um, other than that, expenses are within, within range, um, where we expected them. Like I said, we will have budget amendments next month to cover up the balance of that. So if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Otherwise, Mayor? I didn't spend an hour.
Russ, this is Jamie, and this probably isn't more of a question a- as much as just a thought of, maybe there's a story here that we could get out to citizens in Perry. Everybody heard the governor come on. We've all heard about, you know, uh, up until this point, also concerned about what we were gonna see as far as our utility bills and things like that. Um, this is probably worth getting this out into the public eye and trying to do a positive story around it, um, just a, a note, but probably worth getting with the journal and, and seeing how we can show positive light into what we were able to do and specifically that, um, Dixie with us and, and just talking more about that. But I think everybody was, eh, has angst over what this is gonna do to us.
Right. Well, and, and I'm a hundred percent with you. You know, this is, this may be the largest benefit of a municipal-owned electric system, um, you know, not having a, a three to four percent, eight to ten percent, uh, increase in our overall bill, month in and month out, due to, due to those electricity pieces, um, that, that fuel cost. So, no, we'll, um, I think OMPA, Dixie wasn't OMPA, working on, on a, on a press release that, that we could utilize.
Yes, OMPA sent a press release last Friday. Uh, that is what's in the city manager messenger currently, and I also forwarded that to the journal and asked them to run it, and she told me it would be in there.
This is, uh, uh, one of the points that, that we need to make that, uh, throughout, throughout time and throughout the year, we'll see people, especially summertime, when their rates are, or their utility bills, bills are high, and they're wanting to talk about why we don't get our utilities from, or electric from OG&E or some other source. Well, this is the reason right here that we can proudly say we're a member of the OMPA, uh, because those guys are, are taking it pretty hard, uh, for their members. And, uh, I say that we should be a proud member of the OMPA. All right, any que- go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, Bryce, the, the hotel motel, that would normally be down right now, right? Just not as much as normal, and we should sit coming back in another month or two?
Yes. Well, January is a slower month, yes, but, um, not, not to this extent.
Right, right.
I'm not sure that the Holiday Inn out there was open. Uh, I know that this recently got bought. Uh, I can't remember if it was, uh, when they opened back up. It seems like maybe in sometime in February. I, I don't remember for sure. So there was a period there for, uh, maybe December, uh, January, somewhere in there that the Holiday Inn was, was closed.
I, I guess I was asking as an indicator, uh, Russ, that if, it may be more concerning if we don't see those start to come up in the next few months. Is that fair?
Oh, yes, yes. Um, it, uh, even a bigger concern if, if we track out, you know, less than that fifteen thousand dollar number a long time.
Right, yeah, okay.
Any further questions? All righty. We will move, uh, thank you, Russ. I appreciate it. Uh, move to item eight. Consider approval of amendment to chapter one, section twelve, to the Personnel Manual of the City of Perry City, or Perry Municipal Authority, by the addition of a new subsection B concerning full-time employees and temporary reduction and relettering the section. This is the exact same thing that we passed in the, uh, Municipal Authority, in the PMA.
This is Gloria, and I make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty-one oh-four of the City Council to amend the Periputical Code entitled billing and general provision.
Or that's actually one number too far ahead, Gloria. That's the wrong ordinance number. But we will accept, we'll accept the, the amendment. Right, Dixie?
Yes.
All right. We have a second to that.
Second, wines.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Strelor.
Yes. All right, now we'll move on to item nine. Consider approval of ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash oh-four of the City Council of City of Perry amending chapter seventeen, article two of the Periputical Code twenty-twenty entitled billing and general provisions by the addition of a new section seventeen dash two-twenty-one entitled charge for damaged or destroyed AMI water meter caps and intent is providing for repealer, savings, codification, severability, and declaring emergency. All right, council, it's listed down there some of the additional, uh, changes and charges. Uh, I do know that we've had some instances where, uh, people have intentionally, uh, tried to damage the water meter so that they couldn't be shut off or couldn't be billed, couldn't be read accurate. And I understand that there are times that there are accidents and those will get damaged, but this gives us some, some meat to, uh, have some enforcement when we know that they intentionally damaged the, our property.
It, do citizens still have the ability to call in and even if it costs or requests for one of those lids to protect it?
Larry?
Yes, they can do that.
Okay. Is that, did we ever decide on a cost for that, or if it was just if they wanted it, or what was the deal there?
We were just doing it, uh, free, gratis. They don't cost much, actually, and we were doing it until, should it become a problem, then we would, uh, we would come before the council and, and change that. Dixie might know is, um, if we've had more of those since we started doing this.
We have not had very many of those, and, uh, of course, whenever summer gets here and people are mowing, that could change, but through the winter, we really haven't seen much problem, except for these that are intentionally destroyed. And, uh, in case you wonder how we know they were intentionally destroyed, the people actually told us they intentionally destroyed it. Uh, they didn't, um, want us to have the ability to shut their water off. They didn't like it. Uh, and one, in one incidence, they did it twice. They told us they did it. We repaired it, and then they did it again. And we went back and they told us again they did it because they didn't like it. So that's when I became frustrated and told Bryce, I felt like it was time to bring this back to the council and, uh, let you know the issues that we were seeing. Um, and we just need some way to enforce, you can't just keep destroying the property.
Say, hey, Dixie, this is Brian. You know, I have no, no problem with people paying in the situations that you gave, like, you know, intentionally doing it. I, I had a question, a couple of questions just about situations where it could happen. situations where it could happen quote accidentally, and we can just kind of go into that, but the other one is how, what's the lifespan on these things? Is there a period in which they will start to become defective? And people will, I mean, does the city know when that happens? Where the customer wouldn't be responsible for that, like if my antenna goes out on mine next year, can you tell that on your end? That something's malfunctioning and then
Yes, we can tell that, we get alerts that we can look at every day, tell us what the issues are. And in that instance, we get an alert, we go out and look at it. In my opinion, even if this were passed, we would not charge because the crew can easily look at that and see that somebody didn't intentionally cut a wire or jerk a wire out. Uh, and and to me, that's more of what this is addressing, I feel like it, each one of these is gonna have to be looked at individually and determined if this was some sort of intentional error act or or uh negligence on the part of the homeowner, if they just keep hitting it with a mower or running over it, something like that.
But so it's really, this is really more targeted towards that, towards towards somebody destroying city.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear, because I, I'm certain that there has to be, because it's technology, there are gonna be times when it becomes defective for whatever reason, but but you can tell on your end that when that happens or the city can go out and see if somebody has kind of manipulated that in some inappropriate way.
Correct.
Uh, I would assume Dixie, it doesn't specifically give you a, it just tells you something's wrong with it, is that correct?
That's correct, it will just tell us it can't receive a reading, something like that, and then we don't know until somebody goes out and looks at it what maybe the problem is.
Gotcha.
Any further questions? Moral, motion to approve.
Gloria, second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Uh, yes, thank you. Item ten, we are going, oh yes, you're right, okay, I'm sorry, I just thought of that too. We do need a motion on emergency. Thank you, Dixie.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes, thank you. Item number ten, we are going to table uh to a a time in the future, we don't have all the information that we were expected to receive on this to have uh in front of us tonight. So we are gonna move on to item eleven, consider nominations for the uh O O M A G, O M A G board. Uh, apparently, uh Mr. Meacham has uh served on this board for us for a a number of times and uh he has requests to not be re-nominated for that. Russ, we do wanna say thank you for that. Uh, but, so if there's any nominations uh that uh someone would like to make, we would accept, or if not, we will just decline that nomination.
I'd like to nominate Russ. I'm joking.
What happens if we vote him in anyway?
I'll reinstate it if somebody wants me to.
All right, well, if uh we're hearing, if we're hearing none, we will move on to item twelve. Authorized actions related to electric vehicle charging stations. Uh, Dixie, this is your baby.
Yes, it is. Uh, as you all know, we received the grant for the charging station, it'll be just uh to the east of the Tesla charging station. The grant itself was based on a a state bid for the, from E V Connect for the equipment, and that amount is the forty seven thousand. But then when you add the installation into it, it would go over the amount that we can can do without doing sealed bids. And we don't wanna be accused of bid splitting. So um after discussion with Russ and Bryce, we decided it was in our best interest to accept the bid from E V Connect, because that is a state bid, so we don't need to go out for bid on that, and then just go out for bid on the installation portion.
Thank you.
Do those need to be approved separately or?
I believe so.
I make a motion to award the state bid to the E V Connect.
We have a second?
Second, wines.
Roll call, please.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes, on item B. Motion to approve, moral.
Second, white.
Roll call, please.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes, thank you. Consider a, or item thirteen, consider approval of payment of ten thousand three hundred seventy five dollars to Monsoon Consultant for work associated with Perry's Phase Five Sewer Improvement Project. So this will go from uh Brookwood Park at Ninth Street, all the way down, I believe, to Highway seventy seven.
Make a motion to invoice.
Second, moral.
Um, can I ask a question before we
Yep, yep, yep.
Uh, this was the place that we did have the issue with uh the manholes being too low, if I remember correctly. All that's addressed in this.
Uh, I'm assuming it is, I haven't looked over the specs, but Vernon, Vernon's been through it, so I'm assuming that's that's accurate. Any further question?
Uh, Bill, I I I think we could note here that uh we're, we're not gonna get the C C D B G grant uh for this, but Meredith had sent a uh a document to us and told us uh where some of our monies are. Dixie, do you have that handy?
Yes, I do.
Can, can, can you read those sources? Now, I don't know that those have been checked, that those are through February. And so there may have been some expense, and of course, we don't have the engineers estimate, but just for this to advise you, we're not gonna get the grant, and and where are the possible funding sources?
The sewer bond has three hundred sixty five thousand seven hundred and two dollars. The A M I bond has two hundred and seventy four thousand eight hundred ninety nine. And the capital improvement has one hundred ninety six thousand four hundred and five, all of those are as of February twenty twenty one. Unless we have other commitments already obligated on those, she hadn't had time to check that yet.
So we do have the ability to uh uh to do that project if the city count, well, based on whatever the engineer's estimate is, if the city council appropriates that money for that purpose.
And I do know that a lot of our issues with uh uh this project, not only is it is the sewer system defective, but a lot of it was infiltration of rainwater and and freshwater getting into this. And being as I live real close in proximity to this, I know of two manholes that were completely underwater this week. This last weekend in the rain.
No, my yard was flooding this weekend with sewage.
Well, I've gone to bat for us with C D B G and we are not gonna get those funds, unfortunately, I'm not very happy with them, but that's, that's third ruling.
Yeah, uh, so some of the criteria that Dixie was telling me about is, I I couldn't wrap my head around, we had uh pretty extensive conversation about this. So. Uh, motion to prove, we got that, is it roll call now, please?
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes, thank you. Item fourteen, discuss the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, any discussion needed there, council?
I believe the only thing I'll ask, because I just couldn't remember, uh Bryce, didn't we have a um end date on that proclamation?
February twenty eighth, the proclamation's over.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just was wondering where we were.
And and that's the, that's the mask, uh, that mask proclamation is over.
Right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Uh, all right, uh Bryce, before I read this in, maybe you're typing those, are we gonna do a five minute recess? Okay, okay, before, if anyone's on, it wants to come back after uh we go into executive session. After we come out, uh, we will have a five minute recess before we uh start the meeting, before you get back on. Item fifteen, consider convening an executive session to discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear Watershed Project pursuant to Title twenty five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statutes as amended. Item number two is discuss on a matter pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to discuss a proposal to entice the location of a medical related business to the city of Perry to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal in interfere with the development and implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma State Statute. Need a motion to uh convene an executive session, please?
So moved.
My second.
Roll call, please.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes, thank you.
Item 17, take any actions deemed necessary pursuant to executive session. Hearing none. Item 18, on the motion of adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Moral.
I second it Gloria.
Roll call please.
Hold on.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes. Thank you Council.